At six o'clock, I'd like to call the regular monthly meeting of the Salem Central Board of Education to order. Would people please stand for the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to my public forty six days. One nation under God, free from all political or administrative government.
Gina, are there any amendments to the agenda?
There is, um, there is an addendum that was added and made public on Monday. Cheryl, for Cheryl Chambers as an election inspector. I also made two changes to two portion appointments. It's just a wording, um, change for the auditors. And we will add Cheryl to the end of this, but Chris, no?
Yep. Thank you. Um, at this time, I'd like to open up the board to, uh, to public comment. If there's anybody here who would like to share any thoughts with the Board of Education. Again, we do have another period at the end of our, our meeting. At this point, I'd like to turn the meeting over to the superintendent for our reports and presentations.
Great, so, uh, first we have a presentation. As I, uh, have shared with you earlier in the year, um, we've started our work on our transition as part of the, uh, special education continuum to add in the instructional co-teach model. So, um, we call it ICT for short. Um, and, uh, we have an amazing, uh, pilot team. So, uh, we're piloting in, uh, a few grades. I don't want to steal the thunder of the presentation. And, uh, we're fortunate this evening to have one of our, one of our members of our pilot team to come and do a presentation just to give the board, uh, and just an overview and some highlights of, uh, of the process, uh, how we got to where we are and what's going well. And we know as with everything, uh, there are some challenges and really how we're going about, you know, working on those and fine tuning. So, thank you.
Julie Norshiel, our special education teacher.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You can stand wherever you want.
I'll stand back here, cause this is comfortable for me. Um, so ICT is a program we started worse. And this is a PowerPoint that we developed during our four day training. So you're only really getting a snippet of it. It's really PowerPoint to train the next group of teachers. So I've taken out a lot of the slides and stuff like that. But it'll give you a good snapshot of really what we're going to be offering and what we are offering currently and why we're offering and in what, why ICT is different than like a, um, a direct consultant teacher model or anything else like that. So it's a whole different type of way of teaching. Um, and so that's kind of what I'm going to show you tonight. But this program was really developed to train the next set of teachers. So some of it will be super relevant and you can ask me anything about it. But, um, it's just kind of a snippet, okay? So, um, this is kind of the objective that you're going to learn tonight or what our next group of co-teachers are going to learn. Um, but it really starts to talk about why ICT is a different, um, methodology for teaching and implementing education. So when we first started to look at ICT, we wanted to make sure that it aligned both with the mission and vision statements of Salem. And it really does, um, fulfill what Salem is trying to do by every student being future ready. That was one of the kind of, um, targets that we were making sure that we had and the benchmarks that we wanted to do. And we wanted to make sure that as we moved through that it kind of aligned with those standards and missions that we already had set forth. So the Individual with Disabilities Act is some legal jargon. Um, but really what it means is that all students have a right to have, be educated. And so again, future ready, making sure that we deliver instruction and mythology and content according to both curriculum and state standards. And looking at each of the needs of children, both with and without disabilities, um, to make sure that we are moving through in the general curriculum and meeting them where they are needed. We have a really set, we have a really broad range of diverse learners. They learn all kinds of different ways. And so a part of ICT is developing curriculum that meets those needs. So the definition of co-teaching is an integrated co-teaching, which means that both teachers in the room are designing instructions that, that implement both standards and rigor at where a student currently is, regardless of their learning abilities. That, that we're asking the outcomes to be, um, both meaningful and authentic. And we're trying to make sure that students are, needs are being met to wherever, however they learn best, whether it's auditory or visually or, um, in small groups or large groups. So we're looking at each of our classrooms and we're deciding instruction, how best to serve those students. So what is special design instruction? It's really a broad range. It can be anything from, um, skill groups or looking at vocabulary before a lesson is met or maybe one last question or one less choice in a multiple choice. But maybe we test auditorily, maybe it's a question and answer versus reading or question and answering. And so it's really looking at what our students need and how to move them through their curriculum with the outcomes that we would want for them. So again, it's, it's designed specifically for those students and at that time. So every year is going to change a little bit. Obviously our curriculum doesn't change, but how we present that curriculum certainly can change depending on the needs of our students. So this is the big W's, you know, teachers, what, where, when, how, what, um, typical teacher kind of thing. But this is kind of how we start. We look at evaluations, both state scores. We look at IEPs, we look at, um, standardized testings, we look at formal and informal. And then we, upon those assessments, we kind of move through and decide how best to move students forward. Um, again, the why is to allow all students to access the curriculum. And the other why is to foster some independence. All teachers want students to become independent learners. I will tell you, seventh and eighth graders are the most intrinsic learners at this point. But in this program, we're hoping to be able to engage them because we're looking at instruction that is targeted to them. So that allows them some freedom to engage in learning and how best they present that material back to us. We're adapting, we're looking. So co-teacher kind of in its nutshell is two or more certified teachers in a single face. Um, the difference between like a direct consultant teacher, where a teacher would push into a classroom and have direct instruction for maybe those special ed students. An integrated co-teaching model means that both two students, both teachers are responsible for those students as a whole. So we, when Vicky and I teach or Justin and I teach, we are responsible, her and I, not just me for special ed, but we're looking at that whole classroom as a whole learning community. And we're setting that environment and that community and that climate to best foster education. So we're doing that together collectively and we're needing constantly to try to have to do that. But this is a little video, hopefully it plays. Go. Go. Yes? Oh.
Got teach by another teacher and teacher got teach by another one. So all kinds of teachers teach, I don't think they have a teacher.
When you think you've gotten drawn down, that's the time to be nervous. As teachers, we have to learn how to adapt.
Some of them learn different ways. They learn by touching, they learn by doing, they learn by seeing or hearing.
The teacher has always made fun for us, or did games for us.
We're just saying, was it fun? But yeah. It was some fun.
Teaching is performance.
Their job is to inspire you to do something with your life.
And I love that, blowing their mind. The goal is to make them better, whatever. It's the biggest reward ever. It's really cool.
You touched on Kyle's life, I mean, that's everything. It's everything.
So we just thought that was a really cool video. Really shows the uniqueness of students as a whole and, and the uniqueness of teachers as, as people and individuals trying to sometimes walk through mud to get to where you need to go, you know? Um, and making fun, I have to admit that sometimes it's not all fun. Um, I, I think my students would tell you that I'm not always fun. Think that I'm super fair and, um, inspiring, but I'm not always fun. But the difference between, there's, I kind of touched on this before with a consultant teacher model versus a co-teaching model. We're, we're really in a, in a consultant method. I would, um, really be in charge of my students and, and implementing strategies for them where now I am responsible for the whole collective classroom. And so that's kind of the biggest difference is that we're looking at them as a whole community, learning community. And we're looking at their gifts and their focuses and their strengths and trying to implement that because that's what moves them forward, to be able to be connected and be able to, um, offer something within a classroom. It is vital, seventh and eighth graders, to be heard. And so I think that's one of our components of this is to try to look at that and say, how, how much more can we involve them and what is the best strategy for this group of students? Um, so it's a research-based mythology of teaching to ensure that all students in the room get what they need. We are, this is baby steps. We are still developing strategies. We are still learning. We are on week eleven or twelve here. So, um, it is easier to do with my math teacher who I've been with with two years versus my social studies teacher that I've been with for 10 weeks. And I think as we roll this out, we'll become better and better and better at implementing the strategies that we need. I service four different teachers plus I have my own classroom plus I have a resource block. So the time to run back and forth and be able to have a conversation with my teachers and how we can better do that or what's coming and what can we do to help students, um, takes a lot of commitment on all of our parts. So here are some ways that, that we can teach, though there are two levels here. One is a simple kind of shorter methods where we're speaking and writing and we're team teaching and we're bouncing off each other. But the next level is more of a parallel model or we're flip flopping stations or I'm teaching maybe something on angles and she's teaching something on crafting. And then we're flip flopping and we're, and then those group of kids come to me. So there's a lot of variety of teaching and we each teach something different, but the knowledge of the subject and the present, the presentation of the curriculum is really what we're focused on and how best. So I speak differently than maybe she does. She's kind of a math brain, I am not. So sometimes I can reach those kids at a different level. So that's, those are things that we're all still exploring and that will develop better skills and as the years go by. So this is a biggie for, for us that there is no co-teaching without co-planning, to be able to plan effectively and to look ahead and say, okay, we're going to present this material. And then we can look back and say, well, I have students who have maybe reading disabilities and what, what kind of things can I implement to make sure they can access the curriculum at their level? So let's just take, um, the Constitution. Um, if you've ever read it, it's horrific to read. Um, and so, so I could look at that and say, all right, so my, my learners that can't access that language that's written like that, can I use some other tools so that they can understand what all those articles are meant and what that Constitution means? Like, like just to read it to them, they may not understand that fully. So that's the diversity of teaching and that's the diversity of a co-teaching model is to try to figure it out. And that takes planning. So here are some of the needs that we kind of come up with. Again, we met in the summer, four days. This was, none of us were in this model yet, so I can't tell you that this is an exhaustive kind of thing. These are just things off our head that we could see maybe be challenges for us. Consistency, staying with the same grade level for a while to make sure that you implement that and you get kind of a, a rhythm going. Um, communication, um, building in a schedule that allows for planning. Those are kind of things that we saw that as we move forward, we even need. So our final thoughts was that our best is the communication between our staff and to make sure that we have the time to do that. And that we set realistic expectations, not only for our teachers, but for our students. Um, I will let you know that I'm not going to be an expert science teacher in this. I have a pretty good science background because of my history, but I'm not going to be able to teach the periodic table like Pam Parker does. So, so those will be things that we're going to springboard off each other. I hope never to be a science teacher, but I definitely want to be able to be that teacher that, that, um, communicates needs and can do foresight of like, I know the student may need this and could we do this or what about breaking this down easier? Let me take these kids into the lab and work and you do the same, like that we can springboard off each other, enhancing, getting way more done than if you're just a single teacher in a room. So some of the tools we're already using in the, uh, in the ICT model is some of these. So we're using, um, AI to develop, um, again, back to the good old Constitution. Uh, but I can ask AI to.
I just was having a thing today about this.
I know.
So how have you talked about this?
Well, so you go into this and you, in this chat, GPT and say, give me, um, eighth grade level math skills on equations at a fourth grade reading level. And they'll go, and then I'll get 10 little problems. It'll be at a eighth grade curriculum, but at a fourth grade reading level. So that does two things. It allows my students to access them independently, but it also propels them forward. And they get the confidence of being able to do it on their own. They get to be independent, I don't, over their shoulder reading it to them. They really get to be that independent student. And seventh and eighth grade, that's really important for them to not always be with me. That we want them to be independent and, and diverse learners and learners that, that know what their gifts are so that they can use them. We're also looking at assessments. All the assessments in math have been changed. Um, we use a certain program here and I'm allowed to go in and change those into simplified language. I can add a picture clue, I can give them one less choice, I can create a larger graph. So all those, in English, we're developing, um, step-by-step protocols or benchmarks so that they are able to write independently. Some students don't need that, but other students do. So we're looking at those kind of things, but the AI is pretty exciting. This other text compactor is a similar kind of thing. I can put any text in there that I want, I can copy and paste it or I can, um, I can link it to something that I have read or students have read and it'll compact it. It'll take out kind of some of the wordiness. So instead of a five paragraph, which most of my kids are like, oh my God, you can read five paragraphs. They now only have two or three. So again, trying to give them the opportunity to be independent learners and moving them forward. That's the big key is, is I don't want them to ever be stagnant and I want to be able to push them in rigor because eventually the trajectory of learning is, is maybe here and we're trying to close this gap a little bit. We want this gap to be closed and we need to figure out the tools for them to do it. And they need to employ that as well. So we're all taking a deep breath with this. We're looking at kind of making things happen. We're doing small adaptations, adaptations now. We're looking to transport into a co-teaching model across the board. This is the first year for eighth and ninth grade. And the elementary has four classes or three classes going on now. So hopefully after this year is kind of under our belt, we'll come back in the summer and we'll train the next group, maybe the seventh or the 10th or whatever, you know, is the decision where our bubble of kids is. So I think ninth, eighth and ninth is targeted because we have a bigger bubble of kids that have more diverse needs in that, which kind of really pushes us to really experiment with some things. And then as they move forward, we'll be able to kind of move back and forth and they spread this out a little bit. Anybody have any big questions? I know I can ask.
So I just wanted to add, while you're, if you have any questions, that, um, so, um, Mrs. Norshiel, this is perfect. I think, um, it really captures the idea that we can have this really dynamic environment because we have the expertise of the content specialist and the expertise of the special educator really in that and really maximizing that. And, and, um, I loved how you talked about it, all students, because that differentiation works not only for students with IEPs. Also, uh, we can differentiate at a variety of levels. Sometimes you might have elements of enrichment in there. Um, it really looks at, you know, challenges, you know, two people who can work together to look at the, the composition of that class. And really, how do we meet the needs of, of those students in that class? They might look a little different than say, Vicky Perkins' other class because that composition and that diversity of needs might be a little different. So how it's presented, um, can change a little bit, but it is still the content. So it's very exciting. Um, we do have some challenges as we move along and we've been talking about, um, you know, continuing to look at our schedules at elementary and, and high school. And the biggest challenge is the common planning time. And for really, um, special, our special education teachers here, because we're small, a lot of times, uh, teach and work with teachers of, of two or three grade levels. And then how do you really be able to get that time and then at, with four teachers? So, um, Ms. Norshiel was working with the eighth grade. But if she had a seventh grade class, you know, sometimes I'm planning on a composition, how do we get them with all of those teachers? And so I think that's going to be something that's going to take a year or two to really figure out. You know, how, how do we do it? Is it every day? Is it, you know, these, you know, this content area collaborates this week or next week? And, and, um, you know, looking at time in the summer and we have, we did commit a lot of professional development time in the summer. And I see that we'll also be working on that for transitioning. And, and so there'll be the trainers as we're transitioning over probably the next, um, year or two. And in addition, it'll take probably two or three years to really phase in through K through 12. Um, but I think really, um, as a district, investing in that time and the professional development and, um, you know, having the planning time, once they've worked together a little bit, I think some of those challenges of the common planning time, if they can have a chunk of time in the summer even, you know, a couple of days where they can, um, map out a little bit, look at their students, collaborate with teachers from the previous grade level and get a little bit of a head start. I think that will help too. So we'll be looking a little bit at how we, um, work our professional development a little differently and, and our opportunities, I think, for them to collaborate. We're going to have to be a little bit out of the box. In a larger school district, you might ju, you might have two or three special education teachers for one grade level. And so then they can divide up between those teachers and maybe specialize in one or two content areas and only have to collaborate with one or two teachers. Mrs. Norshiel is collaborating with four teachers that are in addition to our full schedule, so.
But I think, I think it's important to kind of know that we, because we're small, one of our blessings is that we know our students. So as they move forward to ninth grade, I can collaborate with Karen and say, hey, the student works best for this. And she may say, yeah, in my backpack, we did this. So I'll make sure that it's incorporated into their next science. So, so that's one of the blessings. Um, and to be able to do that vertically is really kind of nice, um, to get to know her. And then there are maybe some groups as they move through that don't really need as much collaboration because maybe the needs aren't as great. I mean, those, again, are the ICT kind of models that you design instruction specifically for those students. And that's the key to it. That's why it's different. That's why it does take a lot of time and planning because we're looking at those students as individuals, not just groups of eighth graders, they're, they're individual students.
There's another powerful part to this though, that flips on that, that so often that self-assigned stigma that, that the special ed kids can give themselves tends to disappear with this.
Sure.
Because when Ms. Norshiel is taking those eight kids, she usually just takes the five of us.
Right.
And now you've got the peer learning going on and all that.
Right. It's a, it's a really kind of a mix and it's a, and it's a flow. So it's, it's really fluid. You know, I, I will tell you that, you know, sometimes I take some of my special ed students and sometimes I leave them behind. You know, like, so it is, it, we are truly co-teachers. Like when we talk and, and when we had our open house, you know, I was the co-teacher. I wasn't the special educator, although that's where my gifts are. Really, I was that co-teacher of that. So I think students see us different, um, because of that, because we set that, that was purposeful. That we, that like, we set that out so that, that is not always. Now, if students have accommodations or modifications, obviously I step in because that's my forte and that's my, and that's my focus. But for the most part, it is very fluid and it changes a lot. I mean, it could be, you know, some students miss the day before or maybe even a week of school, whatever the case may be, they may need to come to me for extra help or they may go to Vicky or Dawn or whatever to get that help. So that's, I like that, I like that fluidity of that.
How does the concept of training the trainer get weird in here? Who's, who's being trained to train?
So we, so there was a four day seminar and there was 11 of us, I think 11 of us that came to a four day training. So what we did, we were trained on ICT with models and different type of formats for teaching. And so after this year, we will be training here in Salem, we will be the trainers. So we have, um, some people on staff as well. Uh, Dr. Kelly Brock will come in and help. And so we'll navigate that and we'll figure out how, well, we've started that process. But we will start to train those next group of teachers here in Salem. So those teachers that are currently in the ICT model will train the next group of teachers.
So for example, 10th grade, so right now eighth and, so next year, the ninth graders that are in this, they're, um, being taught in this, um, instructional co-teach model. When they go to 10th grade, we want to continue that for them. So, um, the trainers from grades two, four, six, eight and nine. So we have, uh, special ed and regular education teachers. And again, you know, hopefully eventually that kind of, those labels go away, but we have these specialists and they're different areas and they're working together and then they're going to train, then the, um, the teacher, that special education teacher that serves.
And the regular.
Right, and the regular.
Do you have like established best practices that will be?
Yes.
So we do, we have.
They're working on that.
We have it on. Um, and it goes through everything. So the four day training that we got came with this whole notebook. And so based on that notebook and all those seminars that we attended, we attended from nine to four here for four days. And so based on that guidance, we'll go through it. And I'm assuming that like, um, Julie said, that, that we're going to get back up and background. But, but really what we'll do is we here at Salem will train the trainers with supplemental support as they move through, just like, just like we're doing now. We went to a training thing and we're implementing it. And the next stage will be to bring on the next group of teachers and implement and move forward. So it'll be a stepping stone kind of arrangement.
So they, they support each other and they can use their experiences from this year. So there's really, um, this team is amazing because they've gone through the training, they're piloting, they're learning, they're looking at like, wow, this really works well, this isn't working so great. We've got to work on that, right? And so we're fine tuning, but also getting ready to be the trainers. And we have Dr. Kelly Brock and we've, this is, um, we've contract, we've, um, had a, she's, um, a contractor per se. Um, she is someone that we hired a few years ago and she has a forte and, um, multi-tiered systems of support. There and, but, um, this is also, um, her special area. She has a doctorate in special education and, um, a lot of experience with this model. And so she, uh, comes in, so she was part of the training in the beginning in addition to some other training that Mrs. Crandall set up for them. And, uh, so now Dr. Brock comes in periodically, meets with the team. They talk about what they've learned, if there are challenges. And so we have that console and we will continue to utilize her probably for the next few years as a consultant to work because obviously she goes out, um, you know, she's got this expertise and she has learnings from other districts who that are ahead of us. And we also really are fortunate enough to, um, have Ms. Crandall because she, um, this kind of design of how this is being rolled out, she had experience doing this in her previous districts. And so had some learnings from that. So we, we have resources, um, that will support the process throughout. A lot of Dr. Brock, um, we really, um, spent, have her for a lot of hours between MTSS and ICT, uh, last year and this year, uh, through the ARP grant. And that will scale down a little bit, um, but rightly so, because we're developing our own experts internally.
Oh, quick thing is that. Yes. You did not.
You're so teaching it as best.
Yes. Michelle Crandall, for those of you don't know her, our director of personal personnel services.
Well, I just.
Well, I just want to one, let everyone know that this really is going really, really well. Especially when you think about that and you just really put that out there that we're eleven weeks in. Um, I've gone into the classrooms and our teachers are going back and forth. I mean, we have our special, our special education teachers are popping right up when they hear a phrase that maybe somebody in the class might not understand with a background. And it is just, they look like they've been doing this for years. They do not look like this is their first year or let alone their first eleven weeks. So I think it's really important that our team knows this. It is an amazing model that can be so great for students and for staff. I just want to tell you, I wrote down some things that we're getting from some of our teachers. One of our teachers said that they're excited that they get to work with the general education teacher to plan for all students, not just the special education students. They're enjoying having a partner to collaborate with and discuss ideas and reflect on what has worked and what didn't go so well. Students seem to value the special education teacher more within the classroom than had occurred during the direct consulting teaching model. The students are now recognizing that teachers are, they're both a team, that they're working together, they're there for all of them. It's been so far really successful. And as we said, it's in second, fourth, sixth, seventh, or eighth and ninth. We also actually have it in kindergarten. It wasn't. But our special education teacher in the second grade also services kindergarten and she was so excited with the model. She taught our kindergarten teacher and they're doing the same program. So it's been so far met with just.
Yeah, they're happy.
They really are, you know. And I'm really, as far as that goes, it really speaks volumes about the flexibility of our teachers. We really have a wonderful team here and we should be celebrating them.
Thanks. Oh, thank you.
You're welcome. It's amazing. It really is an amazing opportunity for our students and and for our teachers. And I I think it's, you know, we do appreciate you so much and I I hope that's that's being communicated. And Mrs. Norshiel, I'm going to steal, I loved how you highlighted that's you taught me something. I love how you highlighted those key words and the vision that really. I am going to steal that. I'm going to use that in keywords. Yes, yes. So thank you.
And so it was next year.
Well done.
At first, third, fifth, and tenth grade. So any other questions?
If they'll allow it. I realize it's press attention for me asking questions. Sounds phenomenal, having recognized some of the names involved. It sounds like an excellent program. At the risk of dulling the edge, what's ultimately the standard for success? Is it still standardized testing or?
You think that's?
I I think, if I can toss in on this.
Hate standardized testing.
The only, the only issue without some benchmark.
Today, the state's Blue Ribbon Panel put out their recommendations for graduation standards. If you look at that, and I feel totally vindicated having taught this way for twenty years, it is basically a brain-based, project-based approach to learn.
Oh, I understand that.
And that, but that's what, assuming that this doesn't get put in a binder and stuck on a shelf somewhere, that is the direction the state is, is that they are recommending the state go to. So if you have a student who does not do well on standardized tests, which
No arguments for me.
Then then there's an alternative way to assess that student's progress.
Right. And that's what I'm asking. What's the benchmark?
Well, let me, can I answer?
Yeah.
So so there are, there are a few things. This is this is twofold. So this is part of the continuum of of special education. So it's part of the services that we offer. And so that's, there are some regulation around, you know, what we, what, how we offer least restrictive environment and what we can do to help students. So formally, this is a service. So, you know, for me, the benchmark of success and what we've talked about, you know, we've talked a lot about our tests and our test scores. And really, the tests are for, 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 from my perspective and from what I'm asking everyone to utilize is the data that comes from that. And so, you know, the ultimate benchmark is graduation. Uh, and really, we talk about future ready and as we're transitioning and New York State is transitioning. And I was just at this workshop with Dr. Bill Daggett, who was a renowned educator nationally. And we're so lucky to have him locally in this area. And we talked a lot about AI and the portrait of a graduate in general. New York State just copied that. Best national organization that's been working on that and has a portrait of a graduate from New York State. We'll be looking at that with Salem. But it's, are our students modeling the skills that they need for future success? And really, the definition of future ready is no longer delineated by college-ready and really what you're doing when your your foot is out the door. It's future-ready and in the end, everyone's going to have a career, whether it's as soon as they walk out the door, when they get out of the military, when they get out of college, or if they go go right into a trade, whatever they do. And so really looking at the skills and what they're demonstrating. And we'll, we'll be seeing a lot of changes in the next few years about how we measure that. And so the tests will be, you know, there's talk, will the regions go away or not? I don't know, but I think we will be using that information differently. There is, uh, there is a use, whether we like standardized testing or not, that that is useful for us because it provides us data, right? It provides us data to make sure we're equitably looking at different groups. Are they performing and really helping us drill down and look at where do we need to focus our efforts? And so this is a piece now that where we can take that data, bring it back. Right, when we're looking at this group of individuals that may be in eighth grade or ninth grade or sixth grade, whatever grade we're talking about, we can use some of that data to help inform the team in terms of what their strengths are, what the, what their opportunities are. There's not really a number that we need to hit to say ICT is successful. And I, and and I, I think it doesn't sound like a specific answer because I don't, I don't think we should box ourselves into a number.
And no disrespect to the program at all. Because I think it sounds excellent. It's a wonderful idea. My concern is at some point, somebody has to decide if they're future-ready. Uh, what if I talk to somebody and I think, you're not ready? And the school talks to them and says they are ready. That's what I'm saying. Where's the bench? At what point is there a benchmark to say, yes, you've met the goal of being future-ready? Whether it's statistical or in-person interview or whatever.
So there are, there are skills and standards. And so we do, and we're obligated to follow New York State's standards at this point for what's future-ready. So we, we will look at that. But that is changing. And I'm telling you that AI is changing. So I, so we were in a three-part seminar with Dr. Bill Daggett. And from, and that was over six weeks, about eight weeks. And from when he presented to us the first week and today, a new AI tool. So ChatGPT, as wonderful as it is, there are six that had come out since ChatGPT. And since he told us the, the five that were after ChatGPT, just in the last two weeks, another one just came out and it's called AI Personal Assistant. And you can train it. And so things are moving so quickly. They anticipate, he shared with us a list of ten jobs that will be obsolete in eighteen months. Accountant, paralegals. So what, with all due respect, what you think and what I think from, you know, based on our education, our reality right now is future-ready. It, it almost is irrelevant to what we think right now in this moment is future-ready. It's really skills. It's not the need for information. And so we need to talk about going from content to skills to be future-ready. How do we use AI? How do we develop a good prompt? How do we edit that information that comes out? So for what my teacher asked me or what my boss asked me to present or provide for an essay or for a project and really looking at how do we make more authentic learning experience? Those are going to be the keys. And so the target is literally moving right now. The target is moving, the goalposts are moving. And so we in this room, a lot of us are, aside from David, where we were educated in a different time. And what we think education is, is no longer what education needs to be. And that is such a challenge for us. And so that's why I was so excited that Mrs. Norshiel was talking about AI because this is just, and and I'm thinking, oh, my gosh, I'm driving back here from my workshop and I'm thinking just another thing to put on the plate of our teachers. But it can literally make their lives easy. It could give them their lives back because I'm going to tell you, they spend so much time outside of the classroom, planning, developing lessons, meeting the needs of their students. This is so exciting. And how do we bring it to the classroom and teach our kids how to use it? As opposed to like trying to hide it. It's, there's no way. But there's no way to keep it, keep it away, AI away from the kids. And we, so we've got to teach them how to use it and to.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And what, and how they can use it in the future, right? So, yes. Yeah, it's, it's exciting and scary at the same time.
Did I, nothing against the program at all, nothing against artificial intelligence. I was just asking.
Right.
Where the standard.
I think, so I'm just going to pipe in and some, because, and I'm not as smart as everybody else here. But I will tell you that part of the things that we're implementing here at Salem is that we're giving students the tools to do some of the things that maybe we've lost. So we've been so focused on test scores and regions and stuff. Some of the students need some ability to be able to ask good questions. That's a life skill. So that's inquiry. That's what you said. So we, we're trying to hand some of those things back or the confidence to ask questions or what even the questions to ask. So some of that social emotional pieces that are happening in the ICT program address those things. So we can give them all the information. I can teach them how to graph and do all that kind of stuff, can do all that. But the thing is, so how do they take that skill and be able to move it forward into what you're asking? So when they go to you to look for a job, not only do they have the skill to graph or do whatever, but they have the skills to be able to communicate to you, advocate for themselves, ask a good inquiry questions and do all those kind of things too. And I think that's where we are student-ready. So I know that Salem provides a good education. It's no holds bar. Write and graph and we do, we all do, we all do that. But there's this component in it that we also need to be aware of because when they get out there, they need to have all those other skills to be able to be successful citizens and parents and and whatever. So I think that during the ICT, one of the things that we talk about all the time is how to engage kids in the learning process at that point, at where they're at and what skills do they bring to the table? And how do you develop those skills? So if they have a good gift of the gab, how do you develop that skill within a classroom so that they can use it for good later? Or if they're good mathematicians, how do they get that? And then where do they go with it? So, so I think that that is a component of the social emotional piece that we're here in Salem, trying to focus and integrate into our classrooms as well. So just to put that out, I, I go, I was, I'm a C student, right, I'm a C student. But I think that, that because I was taught different skills in my life and my, in my school, that you're able to propel forward no matter where you are based on regions and state scores and everything else. And I think that that is just as important as, like you said, what a standardized score is. And I don't think, I don't want to diss standardized schools because they are a tool, but it is just a snapshot and where a student can go. And I think that we have the ability here and have had the ability to not look at students as a score. And that's one of the blessings of being a small school. We know that. We know our students, so.
We'll be, we'll be updating you along the way. So very exciting. Thank you so much. Okay, so just a few things to add. So I actually talked a little bit about my AI workshop, so I'll kind of leave it at that. But I think, you know, again, things are moving so quickly with artificial intelligence. The challenge is really, so our kids are using it in all kinds of different ways. And I'm not on TikTok and all of that. Maybe David could talk about, I don't know if you are familiar with ChatGPT and AI and all of that? Some different, I mean, we use AI, Alexa's AI, you know, like all of those things, Siri. So, you know, it's there. And so just kind of giving exposure, I just had left a BOSI's workshop with Bill Daggett and the superintendents and principals. And we talked a lot about really what are our next steps, how are we going to work together? Your academic, our academic integrity policies are going to have to change. You know, because you really, again, the days of filling in packets and memorizing information, you can go out and get that. And and, you know, a lot of us in our, you know, in our jobs, we go out and get all the resources to help us to write speeches, to write reports, to do research, all of those different things. And so how do we come back and put some parameters around AI? But we want, you know, so it's not going to be so simple as, well, if you used AI for your essay, it's not necessarily cheating. You can actually take an essay and write. So so we'll say, David, he might get an essay to write. He can write an essay and he can ask ChatGPT or another AI tool to give him suggestions for improvement. Is that cheating or is that just, hey, he uses resources and he learned something and he made that better? Because, you know, as, you know, as a superintendent, I don't necessarily care, you know, as long as it's in an ethical way, but, you know, I don't want someone to go out and, you know, break into somewhere and get me information. But on the other hand, I want the best information and the best solutions to a problem. And I think any employer wants that. And so we want people can go out there, get it, know how to edit, know how to use those tools. So it's really exciting, but it's something that in the next couple of years, we're going to really have to figure out how to, how it works.
That's how you evaluate the source. You know, is it authoritative? Is it the primary source?
Why you? They'll tell you, yeah, I mean.
Does AI do that? Does it?
It's amazing. You've got to go on there. Go on that GPT.
If you write your prompt correctly, then that's the key.
You have to like, yeah, it's, it's amazing. And and we'll have maybe some demonstrations in the summer when we have less things going on. It'll be a summer presentation and really get you using it so you could see. You know, and I think it's the, really the next step. I've learned a lot and I.
I mean, how is that different from somebody taking their paper to their English teacher and saying, hey, can you help me improve this?
It's not. It's not. And it's self-driven. And it gives them the tools that when they're in college or they're working somewhere and they give them a problem or a challenge for them to do that. And so it's really exciting, but it's hard, right? So.
It's new.
You've been teaching for twenty-five years, you get a little nervous. And it's also challenging, right? Like, it's going to be challenging for our teachers that really develop authentic experiences and assessments, not, you know.
All I know is GPS has made a lot of my family members idiots.
No, but, so we talked about that today, spatial, you know, spatial announce and all of those. And we think that, right? But at the same time, it's an efficient way. So then how do we teach that, teach kids and teach people how to then take that information and use it? But they have tools that we didn't have, I think, when we were younger. We didn't have to take out that map when we're lost and look through and know how to read it and do, you know, or circle and all of that.
Every argument, family road trip.
You know, and so again, you know, Bill Daggett, who talks about, you know, checking dividends for their future, not our past. And we have to be careful that our lens of, of what we've known and where we are now doesn't shade or interfere with what we need, you know. We're preparing them for jobs. We don't even know what's this. And it really goes back to now skills.
AI is going, is going to.
It's a game changer.
It, it is. And it's going to make teachers reassess the way that they teach. I mean, David should get an assignment in, in his history class tomorrow to write an essay comparing the, 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 the Confederate Constitution and the US, to the US Constitution for the similarities and differences. He could easily go out and research that and find, he could easily put the prompts in AI and have it write it. But I, as the teacher, could put that prompt in AI, write that essay, give it back to my students and say, now break this down into a graph organizer and cite one source, cite one source for each. Yeah.
And that's the difference.
And, and that's, so you're doing things, you're going to have to do some things in reverse. You're going to have to do some things creatively. You, you need to write the prompt now and show me you know how to write that prompt so that I come up with a good essay. And when I print that essay out from your prompt, you need to correct it. That's your task. That's it. Rather than sitting and writing, then, you know, I'm essentially. And when I print that essay out from your prompt, you need to correct it. That's your task. Rather than sitting right, then, yeah, I'm sending you home to write an essay. You're going to put the prompt in, in, in ChatGPT and give it back to me tomorrow. You're not learning anything from that. But if you write the prompt, I grade that prompt, I give it back to you, you go home now and create that essay using some form of AI or do it here, wherever. And then grade your own essay, find out what's wrong, find out what is wrong, what's not. And that, so there's, there's a million different ways. It's, it's going to force students to become adaptive, critical thinkers. And that's not a skill that everybody can't use. I know it is.
It's, it's exciting. It's, like I said, it's exciting and it's scary at the same time. I think depending on where, where we are, what our comfort levels are. And so I think, you know, one of the things, this is so hot off the presses, we, you know, well, I'll start talking about this a little bit with teachers. And we're still talking, I think, as a team and as a group at BOCES, we're very collaborative. We share resources. And we also really look at, and we're talking about maybe going back to possibly having a common superintendent's conference day where we can have like an AI summit. Maybe either the spring or in the fall, just to give teachers a little bit of exposure. Because like I said, there are a lot of people out there that know more about it than we do because we're kind of, okay, this is my content. Here are my lesson plans. Here's my plan for the year. Don't have a lot of time to kind of step outside of that in this moment. And so just starting to give people exposure and pulling in some of our teachers who are starting to use it and just sharing, I know this is how I used it and this is what I learned. And everybody's sharing in those different ways. I think it's going to be really helpful. So more to come on that over time. Very quickly, as Peter mentioned, today, New York State and the Blue Ribbon Panel and we, there, there are a lot of. There's a lot of information that was just released regarding graduation requirements and the future direction and next steps and, and recommendations. So I have not yet reviewed that. And so we'll be reviewing that over the next months and.
The best part of it, the most informative part to me in that whole email was the final line that said they're going to review the policy on issuing diplomas posthumously. Apparently, we don't do that in New York now.
Yeah. So it's interesting, you know, there's just really a lot of talk. And one of the things that I did just briefly, they talked about some highlights there. But really just looking at, again, one diploma, you have the opportunity to earn different seal endorsements based on what your interests are and what your pathway is. And a lot of what we're working on here, I think, I feel good about our direction of as we've been adding ag pathways, we're working on adding a tech pathway. We're working on our application now and really looking at those different opportunities and meaningful needs of different learners. So as that, as that, that will take some time, but I just, in case you hear about it, we are aware of it and we'll be working on that together. Briefly, athletics, I know I talked about having a subcommittee. The interim superintendent over at Cambridge, he reached out to me and they, they are, have gotten a group together. I have not. I, I saw the email and I skimmed it, but so I've got to get back with him. So I'll be working with the subcommittee. And possibly working on some dates to get together with them and kind of look at our next steps about the athletic mergers and, and our relationship with Cambridge now and possibly in the future. There are some hot off the presses new requirements related to workplace violence. And I've dug into that on Friday, Needham Risk Management Group, which is our, our, our group that advises us, that we have a relationship with. They're putting on a workshop. And so I think that will give me a lot more direction. So I will update you on that. What?
Recent New York State.
Yes, yes. So that is in the works of how we will, we will work to be in, and obviously compliance and, and work with that. So I'll, I'll hopefully have more information for you soon. EV buses, again, I don't want to get bogged down by the conversation in the moment, but I just want to give you some updates and. You know, I'm probably stealing a lot of your, your future, but we, you know, jump into, so there were some workshops at NISBA. And also, as I mentioned last time, I'm on the CSO Chief School Officers Subcommittee at BOCES for EV buses. So collectively, we're working as a region so that we can share where we are at, share our learnings, share resources. And really look at, as if this continues to move forward as it has been outlined, which our AVPC group and our liaison that we have with the state legislator. Says that they are on the timeline. You know, I think everybody doubts whether or not there's infrastructure, but, you know, we need to be prepared. So we don't want to just sit around and wait. Obviously, the capital project has kind of given us the opportunity to take a little closer look. So I did meet another group recently and they did a presentation and talked about transition plans. So as we work through our engineering study and look at a study with, you know, our, we have to do an energy study as well in terms of, you know, what is our capability right now and in the future? So that will inform us also for that next capital work that will need to be done after this one. And then working on a transition plan. So just as we have a fleet, you know, replacement plan, as we talked about last time, that every, you know, we replace, you know, two or three buses every year. And keeping our fleet rotating, we really need to start looking at, in order to meet the timeline, the deadline, say 2035, everything, there's nothing left, right? But you have to start purchasing, starting 2027, that's all you can purchase. I would imagine leases will be available, but there isn't a full discussion of that. But really looking at, do we wait until 2027? I mean, I know we don't want to jump into it, but if we wait till 2027, we might not be able, we have to look and make sure for how many buses we need, that we can replace everything and be on time. And so we may need to start, you know, we need to develop that replacement plan now and the transition plan. So we'll start working on that, what it looks like. Again, it's just a plan. It informs us. And so I think.
Both these groups that we have coming, like, that will help us to kind of guide that.
Yes, um, yes. And so you're probably not going to hear a lot more from me until we really get, get that plan going. And then that will be our conversation. Because I think right now there's a lot of what ifs. There are a lot of opinions. And we need it backed up kind of by our information, our fleet study, engineering, the, you know, our utility company, and really looking at what that plan looks like. So I know, you know, we might be worried. What?
Do you expect it to be much, you have a change to the budget? I mean, cost per unit must be significant.
So it's all capital, right?
Something to consider with that though. And I did listen reading on this earlier this week. The, the upfront cost is considerably higher, but the average life of the bus, the overall life of the bus, the expected savings for each individual bus is $50,000. Because you're not burning all that diesel fuel and gasoline. You're not changing the oil every summer. You're not doing, you have all the.
So that will help us. So these studies and these plans.
The bus last 12 years.
And they, well, the aid reimbursement, they are stretching out to 12 years, whether or not the bus.
But there's mileage regulations on buckets.
Now they, the reimbursement goes over 10 years, so that'll stretch for 12.
Things are being.
That's why we need all this data information.
So as a group, we are, you know, as a group in our BOCES, we really are taking a look at that. And that we might, through our advocacy, be advocating with the legislatures to, to put it back to 10 years, you know, because it stretches out that time, you know, we, we're not going to get as much money. And if, if the bus is already, you know, we'll see, we'll see the timing. But, so I think those are our next steps. We are eligible for some grants along the way. This new group that I talked to the gentle, gentleman, gentlemen, from there afterwards. And there we, we are eligible, some grants that might pay for our energy study with our utility companies. So that, that will be helpful. So I think it's really just putting together with all this a timeline. And then we'll sit down with the board. The, the impacts of the budget could be changes in training. So the amount of training that our mechanics need, there are, I don't know all the details and I'm just learning this, so.
And can they even be deployed, the mechanics?
This is all stuff that we'll have to learn.
Right. Well, and I mean, whether or not they can be deployed is, a lot of, a lot of the work has to be done by the bus company. So there are a lot of details and I'll get into that in the future. But in terms of the training for our mechanics, just for some of the maintenance that we would do here, two people have to work on the bus, but that would be through, we would have to have contracts through there. What will that look like? There could be some added costs when we do have the contract out to say during for transportation that we aren't able to provide for students that are going out of district. There might give us additional costs based on what their additional costs are. So that's something that they'll help us estimate and we'll look at. The purchase of the buses, changes to our bus garage or infrastructure. You can't, you, you can't charge your buses in an enclosed garage, has to be open. So Lake George is, Lake George and Queensberry in our region are ahead of us a bit because Lake George is, they just had a capital project pass, they're building a bus garage. So we'll learn a lot from them. Queensberry is a little bit behind them, but we are next in line. We're the only other school that has started some studies. So I think it will be, we'll learn, we'll learn a lot in the next few months. But that's going to be changes because that's going to impact our capital work for the future in the next, maybe three to five years in terms of our next project. So whether or not they'll give us, there could be some support from New York State is what's anticipated also for some of the charging units, some of the infrastructure.
There's some very, I, I went to one of the workshops at NISBA and there's very interesting stuff coming out of that, that schools are experimenting with and, and trying and new technologies. A district in Northern California had installed what they call their carousel. It's just a giant battery and it stores energy, collects energy throughout the night when the prices are cheaper and when they need to charge the buses during the day, they come and they plug in their battery. So they're not paying the higher energy prices. I encourage all of you to go to the NISBA convention website and look at the, there are all the slides are, are up there from all the presentations. There's some of them that are, this one district, I was fascinated when they were telling, that it has to cost them a whole lot more electricity because they just stored in this giant battery. And when they, they plugged the buses in there. So, you know, they get it, what, what, most buses are all charged up overnight. When prices are lowest, the battery continues to, to absorb the energy off the, the, of the infrastructure. And they make their morning ones, they come back in, they plug in, they draw some from the, from the panel, from the current, and the rest of it all comes out that giant battery that does it there. So.
I think as things go forward, you know, everybody will learn things and we'll all learn how to use.
Yeah. And, and that's why I think, I just wanted to kind of put out there that, you know, I knew we'd talk about it because Peter and I had gone. And I've learned a few things recently, but I think we'll have a little hiatus until once I get these done. I'm thinking probably, you know, February, March, we'll, we'll, it'll depend on the timeline for getting some more of this information compiled. And then I think we'll be able to have a more focused conversation on the next steps and possibly bring someone in who might really be sound. And we have the knowledge to be able to inform the board and the board could ask questions. So that's where we'll be with that. Budget timeline, we're going to work on, Karen and I are in the process of working on the budget timeline, but I did want to ask the board. And we can, we could talk about it in dates to remember if you want, but I do want to talk about what night would you prefer for board workshops? So for our new members, instead of having all the budget workshop and all the budget work in the middle of a board meeting, that can be long for, it's a long night. And sometimes we tend to, whatever we're working on later, lose a little focus. So I just wanted to throw out there, last year, we, we had our regular board meeting and then we had a budget workshop. We did Monday nights, maybe a week or two before that. So then if we had any follow-up information to share, or if the board had follow-up questions, or the public hat could give, you know, public comment related if they observed a workshop. So the workshop is, you know, the board will work, we will have presentations, but it's not a, it's open through open meeting laws, but it's not a public comment. So the, but it gives, so it gives the public an opportunity to then come in and ask questions or to kind of put on the list for future budget workshops or to give feedback. So we had a Monday night. So maybe you do the second Monday of the month and we have our board meetings the third Wednesday. I'm pretty much open to any night. I know nothing nobody wants to do Friday.
So last year you combined the two meetings?
No, we have.
Financing, finance committee meetings, and that's how we did the budget workshops.
Right.
And we broke down the component pieces of budget and took the administrative component, the instructional component, the.
And there were some informational presentations that were also involved in some of those. So we would have one budget workshop a month, basically January, February, March. And then we may have another one before the board has to approve it. So I think last year we had four, we have one if needed. So I wanted to put in the timeline, the proposed timeline, I want to put the preferred night. So I'll propose how the timing of the workshops and the board meetings. But, you know, we don't know if a night, one night is better. Just wanted to get your sense, would Mondays still work or would Mondays not work?
Would it be easier just to send out an email of like what works for people or do you want? I mean, it just depends on what we're looking, I mean, Mondays are probably better than most nights for me.
I'm not home until seven on Mondays.
Correct, that doesn't work.
Right. So what, what?
Tuesdays.
Tuesday.
Tuesdays. What time are we thinking of?
I mean, we could have them at five. I think, you know, obviously we get a little bit, there's athletics and other things going on. But usually I think we bet we were able to keep them to no more than an hour.
Hour.
Yeah, hour and a half, maybe towards the end. We had some challenging decisions to make last year. And so that was a little more information, a little more time, you know, but again, that's why I think if we can, and, and what, what I'll do is take tentatively the Tuesdays, I'll put them on there. And then if someone says, hey, I'm going to be on vacation this week or I can't do this, we can then move that one meeting as opposed to trying to.
Yeah, I see like, I have conflict in January. I'm just trying to see what, so Tuesdays, so the second Tuesdays, other than the one in January, would work for me.
Good Tuesdays. I'll send up, yeah.
I have my wife, so just probably.
All right, let me, I'll play around with it and then we'll try, you know, we want to, obviously things come up at the last minute. But if we can try to plan dates where the full board can be, or obviously that's the best situation. So we'll try to work around that one.
Yeah, it's the ref draft that I put in, so hopefully.
I'll take a look at it. All right. And then finally, quickly, I, I did share with you and, and one of my updates, just some thoughts that I have around. As you know, I'm a big advocate for exploring a more formal route to becoming a community school in terms of securing grants to support that. And Peter and I were at a workshop that was amazing at NISBA. That was very informative. I think really one of the best ones that I've had in terms of, most of the community schools that you hear about are urban schools. And they did share more, some urban examples, but there was a national person there who really talked about that it's possible in smaller rural schools. And he can also connect us with some schools that have successfully implemented it. And I, as I mentioned in my email that I, my board report, I, I really believe the biggest barrier right now is that time and resources, like in terms of human capital, to really put a focus on that. The grants. The federal and some of the state grants that come out, that would be useful to help us really fund some of the things in the future. Come out February, March and they get written during that time. I don't really want to wait on. Another cycle in terms of really exploring those. Because even we may apply for them and get turned down, but you learn a lot from what. Why you get turned down, you can go out there and then, you know, do, and, and work on that for the future. And so. We do have the ability in the short, and really we, in the long term, it's just really trading funding sources. We have a very good title budget this year. I know I've talked about the reading consultant through PASTA. Mrs. Record and I have a meeting with them on Monday to talk about that. To work on, to not only fund the reading consultant, but also. A school, a student family engagement coordinator that could come in and really focus on. Not only looking and help with the grant writing, but also start working. You know, in the short term, we, the term, we look at a lot of our current needs. In the building in terms of student family engagement and how we engage and support families. You know, our homeless students. Our students who are with, you know, from migrant families. There are a lot of things that we can continue to support right now. And all students and families having parent nights. You know, really looking at what some of the key issues are. And trying to educate families in terms of how to support their, their, their children, not only at school. But in their social emotional development and physical health, you know, for example, vaping, mental health issues. And really being able to work with families, those resources. That is a role of the social worker, but right now we have such a need. Our social worker does a lot of counseling and Medicaid billing and. We, she does not, although she works with some of the students as part of that, she's not. She, we don't have the capacity right now to, for her to, to do both jobs. And, and so I, I propose to you a draft description about what that, about that person. It would be grant funded. I envision it, at least for the first year, I think as we go along, we'll really look at what that would entail. But for the first year, it'll be a 10-month position. I'm estimating about 20 days in the summer. And really, again, we can, we can fully fund that. You know, so with the board support, I would like to post as anticipated and see if we can get the right person. With the skill set that we need. So maybe we could get them started. It may take a while to find the right person for the position as well. And that would give us some time to get someone in here. If, hopefully they'll be familiar with the community. But if they weren't, to get some time to become familiar with the community and, you know, work with us. We are also, in the next few weeks going to put out, so part of, so there's. School, school safety and educational climate. New York State has expectations and regulations surrounding that. New York State has not required a survey, but they strongly suggest it. And it's anticipated that over time that will be required, really measuring school culture and climate. Safety wise, social emotionally and looking at that. So we will be in the next few weeks and working with Mr. Greeney, Mrs. Record. They suggested, we're going to go at least six through 12, maybe fifth grade. I just got the surveys and we want to review it and we'll take a look at it. And there's some other stakeholder groups that we will involve in that. So, you know, some of that information will also provide. Some background for this person in this role. So they will, they will start to actively work supporting students and families. But also be able to assist in that grant writing.
The survey, is it just for school members or is it a community as well?
Um, I believe there is, there, I, I don't know, I believe, I have to look at it. I believe there might be one for parents, but I'm not sure. Because Bosie sent me their versions of it. So they put it in Survey Monkey. So New York State has this really complicated form and data collection. And so Bosie's took it and they put it into Survey Monkey, so I'm not sure. There, they, she did send me four or five different ones. So some of them are, so the fifth graders are not taking the same survey as an 11th grader per se. But I believe there is one for staff and I believe there might be one for them, but I'm not. I, I don't hold me to that, I'll, I'll give you more information about.
Just to do a broader.
Right.
Do you want to put?
Right. And this is something in the future, this would be that, that coordinator, this person would really be the lead on distributing that. Kind of compiling the data, presenting it, working with the principals and the counseling staff and the faculty in terms of, you know. Where, where do we go with that? So a lot of times we get these surveys, but there's so much going on, we don't, we can't really do much with that information. And it's just another means to provide. So I know it's a long update and I know, I, we don't have a real meaty agenda. And we're going to try to be at 7:30, I know we have a, have a meeting, but. So David, our student member, I just, we were chatting earlier kind of about his presentation and what he might talk about. And, you know, my thought was, we were chatting. And about, I think it's really would be nice is to get little snapshots into the life of a senior. And, and kind of like in this, this time of the year, I know Lexus gave us a little, you know, snippets last year. But you know, it's a new year, there's new things going on. And I think it's nice to really see a day in the life in terms of, you know, what's going on and what supports and challenges there are. And he said, oh, I'm not really sure, can you ask me some questions? And then we just got talking about something, it's going to start telling me this amazing story about his excitement about some recent college applications. And I think it would just be, it was so exciting and I want you to share that if you're okay with that.
So just tell about like what I was doing, like.
Yeah, well, like what would you tell me you were so excited about today?
Well, so today I applied to one college so far, City Portland, and I'm excited to hopefully go into a career of teaching. And so I just think it's been really great to be here and especially discussing something involving teaching in a lot of these presentations. It helps to give good insight as to what I want to do. And so it's just been really good to be a part of this and especially applying to have that experience before going into that path. It's, it's been awesome and so I'm excited to go to. Any college really that I can get accepted to and to go down that path. So yeah, it was, it was fun applying and kind of looking at what I was doing and things that are going to help me down that career.
So it became real today when you applied, you made your first application. And talk a little bit about the process, so you did the Common Application and I'm, I'm not sure the, the, the board is probably up to date. So there's a application where you can commonly apply to multiple schools, talk a little bit about that.
So with, with Common App, you are able to first set up a list of schools. And then put in data that are, that is going to go to every single one of those schools. But it's, it's basically like putting it into a big, a big basket, basically. And every, and this is going to contain general information as to maybe what you've studied in high school or what you plan to do. And that's going to go to every college and it makes that application process very easy. Every college will then take that information and ask you specific questions that relate to that college. But you are basically able to easily apply to all these colleges and they will, it'll help you, it'll say something, you know, as this college requires this information. So put this information into what you're doing or this one doesn't require that. So this is optional information and it helps to sort what you've done and then what you've been through and it makes the application process very easy.
Is it a single fee?
There is a fee to, for applying, but there's no fee to using this.
Not a per college fee?
Yeah.
I'm going to ask you one B, you'll get, you, you get it out there. There, there, there's a lot of colleges that. They belong to the Common App process. So some colleges may not, they may require their own.
And I'm learning quickly that some schools you can get different fees based on if you know an alumni or have connections and things. So those are things to look into too.
Today and asked me if I knew alumni from Portland and I do. And it was fun to put that information in there and I don't know exactly how it's going to utilize, it didn't state that. But I, it does ask important questions like that and it analyzes and it allows you to look at what you've done and what you know, which makes the application process easier.
And then you have, so part of that is recommendations. So people here on this side, they, they have a part of that too. So you give, so talk about that for a second, Chris.
Yeah, so I can't remember what the websites.
Nuance, is it?
Naviance, right, so I needed recommendation letters today. And one of the cool things is you can link this website called Naviance and that account will link to Common App. And so if you need something like a letter of recommendation, the teacher can submit it to Naviance and that goes through your Common App. And it makes it to where any college that you apply to, you'll get that letter. And so it makes it far more easier in those regards in terms of sending letters and having those two accounts linked. And each one too has different resources for you. I haven't used Naviance as much, but it is, you are able to use that to look at college acceptance rates, things like that and pair with Common App.
And that's how guides, sensors put it, like their transcripts and all that kind of things.
Right, and, and so what's nice about Naviance, so we've only had that. Three, this is our third year, so we implemented that three years ago and it's, it's nice for the teachers. So if Mrs. Maxwell, someone asks Mrs. Maxwell for a recommendation, she can put that in there. She, so, so David can ask multiple teachers for recommendations and they'll be sitting in there. And then they can, so a teacher, a teacher doesn't have to write David three different letters, a recommendation. And change the name of the college on there every time, you know, it's, it's nice. What we're doing is trying to build, so over the years, younger students, we can start in sixth grade. There's interest inventory, surveys, that you can go and explore different careers. It's, it's pretty cool and you can really build a portfolio in there that then gets attached. And depending on what your, what your, what your future plans are. And so resumes, you can put a resume in there, you build your resume, you do resume building. So it's a great resource for students, but also teachers and guidance to really, really, everybody, it's very efficient. So, but pretty helpful.
Yeah.
See, wasn't that easy?
You don't know what you're missing from your.
As a professor, say you write it and I'll sign it.
Great. And your wrestling started, yes.
Yeah, we were in the waiting room and confronted me and I was.
I was just waving at you. I want. Come and see me later.
Interrupting practice.
Coach LeBlanc was just doing his wrap-up speech and I just want to be like, see me later and he's like, what? Blame it on me.
But that made me think, especially with the presentations that we had involving teaching, one of the things that I really liked the most about the school is we're talking about the application process. And letters of recommendation is the involvement between teachers and students. I have had, as a senior this year, I've had to have many classes with students that I haven't been with before, taking different classes. And I've had students from a lower grade level in my classes. It's been, I don't, been an interesting experience to be involved with those grade levels. But to be involved with the teachers that are equally as involved in their schools, that's why I'm happy and it's wonderful. And they've been inspirational as well, especially with me going to, going to, going to teaching. Those great teachers that we have as school models in this school. And it makes anything involving college applications or even discovering what you want to do for a career, it makes it so much easier. And so I think a really good thing about our school is our teaching staff on the side, just like.
Nice, thank you for sharing that. See, that was not that hard, was it? That worked, good job. Any questions?
Oh, we're just excited to hear our updates.
Making progress. I, I know, I remember. It was weird to go when I did that, so. What do you have to decide?
So, yeah, it was in the springtime, I think it was in May. But there are, I think, five colleges I'm applying to today, tonight, that will give me a decision by late December, early January. Yeah.
Some do rolling admissions, some do early decisions, some do, I mean, it's, it's very, every school's a little different. I'm learning a lot this year too, I have eight seniors for the first time, like I never have that many, you know, it's kind of exciting to learn this stuff with them.
Well, thank you, it was a long report tonight, but I, I think it was very informational. We covered a lot of tiers. It's exciting and I know sometimes we get on one or two topics and I can sometimes, you know, sometimes it's, they're controversial, sometimes they're not. But I think it's nice to hear highlights and, and some things really that showcase the amazing things that's happening in, in school. So it was a good night with, between our presentation and David sharing, so thank you.
Thank you, David.
So. Ready to roll? Yes, we do have our. We go so over on with the ready. Yes.
Does anybody wish to have an item removed called the consent agenda?
No.
I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
So moved to him by Heidi. Second from Peter, although in favor, please signify by raising your hand and from Carrie, five zero. And we pretty much traveled across the things and I think we have no committee reports at this point. And we, but it sounds like we've got some things getting ready to be scheduled. We'll move on to our personnel. Item six, entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Triskine Moore, teacher A, effective October 26th, 2023. Second, by Peter, second by Heidi, although in favor, please signify by raising your hand, motion Carrie, five zero. Entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Barbara Pratt, physical therapist, effective December 31st, 2023.
So moved.
Motion by Peter. Okay. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hands, and Carrie, five zero. Entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Rory Carey as the modified girls wrestling coach for the 2324 school year. Fingerprints are on file and it is in the capacity of employees at will. So moved, motion by Heidi, second by Peter, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, motion Carrie, five zero. Entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Rory Hunter Day as the co-modified and the co-JV wrestling coach. For the 202324 school year, fingerprints are on file and it is in the capacity of employees at will. So moved, motion by Heidi, second, second by Tom, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, motion Carrie, five zero. Entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Riley Burr as the co-modified and co-JV wrestling coach for the 2324 school year. Fingerprints are on file and it is in the capacity of employees at will. So moved, motion by Heidi.
Second.
And a make payment, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hands, and Carrie, five zero. Entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Lisa Oswald as a volunteer wrestling coach at all levels for the 2324 school year. Fingerprints are on file in the district office and it is in the capacity of employees at will. So moved.
Second.
Second by Peter, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, motion Carrie, five zero.
So I'm throwing off her family affair there. Yeah, we got a bad, but she, she changed assets, sorry.
Entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Robert Seglowski as a volunteer basketball coach, girls and boys and all levels. For the 2324 school year, fingerprints are on file and it is in the capacity of employees at will. So moved, motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Peter, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, motion Carrie, five zero.
So that needs to be a correction.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep. Let's just, right, we'll correct Bob to Robert. You read it correctly. Yes, I just, I just wanted to clarify that we will correct that.
Entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Blake Rich as the modified girls basketball coach for the 2324 school year. Her fingerprints are on file and it is in the capacity of employees at will. So moved, motion by Heidi, second, here, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand, motion Carrie, five zero. Entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Ashley Campbell as the JV boys basketball coach for the 2324 school year. Fingerprints are on file. Fingerprints are on file, in the capacity of employees at will. So moved, motion by Heidi, second. Second again, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion, Carrie, five zero. Entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Blake Rich as a substitute teacher, effective October eighteen, twenty twenty-three. So moved, motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Peter, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion, Carrie, five zero. Entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Ethel Holmes as a substitute nurse, effective October twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Fingerprints are on file.
So moved.
Heidi.
Second.
Second by Peter, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion, Carrie, five zero. Entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Kimberly Skelly as a substitute teacher A and a substitute cafeteria worker.
You have to add that. You said Kimberly.
Yes, but that's her, that's the. It's down there. She did it right, you did it right.
Oh, okay.
The name is wrong.
I tried.
Entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Kimberly Skelly as a substitute teacher A and a substitute cafeteria worker, effective November sixteen, twenty twenty-three. Fingerprints are pending. So moved, motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Peter, although in favor, please signify by raising your hand. She carried. Entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Salon Fitch as a substitute teacher A, effective November sixteen, twenty twenty-three. Fingerprints are still pending. So moved, motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Peter, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion, Carrie, five zero. Entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Renee Slater as a substitute cafeteria worker, effective November sixteen, twenty twenty-three. Fingerprints are pending. So moved, motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Peter, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion, Carrie, five zero. Entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Stephanie McKernan as a part-time teacher A, effective October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Fingerprints are on file. So moved.
Second.
Second by Peter, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion, Carrie, five zero. Entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Lisa Buck as a part-time teacher A, effective November seventh, twenty twenty-three. So moved.
Second.
Second by Peter, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion, Carrie, five zero. Entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Regina Eastman as the chief inspector, election chairperson for the December fifth, twenty twenty-three Capitol Project. So moved, motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Peter, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion, Carrie, five zero.
You were waiting for discussion there, weren't you?
Yeah. That's a conflict of interest. Wouldn't care in sleep.
Entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Karen McGregor as an election inspector for the December fifth, twenty twenty-three Capitol Project. So moved.
Second.
Heidi, excuse me, Peter, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion, Carrie, five zero. Entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Susan Neal as an election inspector for the December fifth, twenty twenty-three Capitol Project. So moved, motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Peter, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion, Carrie, five zero. We have our. Addiction. Entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Cheryl Chambers as an election inspector for the December fifth, twenty twenty-three Capitol Project.
So moved.
Motion by Peter.
Okay.
Second by Jen, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. And Carrie, five zero. Right, continuing on with action items, entertain a motion to, at the Board of Education, set the rate of pay for the election inspectors at fifteen dollars per hour, effective for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So moved, motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Peter, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion, Carrie, five zero. Entertain a motion that the Board of Education approve the budget transfers for the month of October.
Second.
Second by Peter, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. And Carrie, five zero. If there's no objection, I'd like to combine the next three items. They are tax credit items. Entertain a motion to approve the issuance of a refund to Timothy and Dorothy Brandt due to the fact that the assessors removed the STAR exemption for their tax bill for the twenty-one, twenty-two tax year. It is defined as a clerical error. Next one. Entertain, continue to approve the issuance of a refund to Timothy and Dorothy Brandt due to the fact that the assessor removed the STAR exemption from their tax bill for the twenty-two, twenty-three tax year, and this is defined as a clerical error. Also, issue the refund of one thousand, one hundred seventy-two dollars, seventy-one cents, Jay Valanca, due to the fact that his small claims assessment review was awarded. The claim was for the excessive assessment on his paid tax bill for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So moved, motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Peter, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion, Carrie, five zero. Like to combine the next three building use. Um, entertain a motion to approve the building requests from the Salem PTA to use the auditorium on November seventeen, twenty twenty-three at five o'clock PM to nine PM for a PTA's concert movie night. Also approve the building use request from the Salem Youth Basketball for the use of the high school gym or auditorium, starting on November twenty-seventh to June fifteenth, on Saturday mornings, some Saturday and Sunday afternoons, and one or two weekday afternoons, their schedule is flexible. And approve the building use request from the Salem Rotary Club and the class of twenty twenty-six to hold the forty-third annual April Pools Race on Saturday, April sixth, twenty twenty-four, on the school ground. So moved, by Heidi. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand.
What's maybe.
Oh, it's a turkey, it's about a turkey.
Um, it sounds like.
I can't remember what it is, it was something about a turkey.
Well, kids in your standard anyway.
There was a flyer that came home.
Entertain, uh, moving on to sports merger. Entertain a motion to approve the renewal of the sports merger for baseball between Salem Central School and Cambridge Central School for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. This is for both varsity and junior varsity levels. So moved.
Second. Second.
Second by Peter, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion, Carrie, five zero. Thank you. Entertain a motion to approve the new sports merger between Salem Central School, Cambridge Central School, and Greenwood Central School, for modified lacrosse, effective for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So moved, motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Peter, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion, Carrie, five zero.
Yes, entertain a motion to accept the donations of the shop Off Broadway, totaling nine thousand, seven hundred nineteen dollars and sixty-seven cents. These grants were awarded to thirty-six recipients in the district.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Jen, all those in favor. Motion passes five to zero.
Or four zero, sorry. Adam's saying, for the grants awarded to like students, teachers, teachers.
Teachers, teachers, staff, club advisors.
Does it have to be used for like office, for school supplies and things like that?
Some of the things, it's it's either we could provide activities for students or a benefit to students. Awesome. It did kind of change during COVID. Uh, did move from uh, specific activities to more of a benefit to the students and their families. So kind of hasn't been evolving over time for some of the things that they are able to support. But I am the chairperson of that committee, I'm the, it's another hat it wears. It's.
Appreciate your generosity.
The ladies enjoy hearing, you know, how the one it is. Thank you.
Entertain a motion to approve Ms. Bianca as therapy dog and infant that have been working to come in every other Wednesday from eight twenty to eleven o'clock PM, or AM, excuse me, effective immediately until the end of the school year. So moved.
Second.
Heidi.
Second.
Is that, did I hear the, it came from?
No. She's a.
Second, Peter.
Thank you.
Uh, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion, Carrie, five zero.
Note that this was.
Yes.
And we're just moving on to other business, um, the Capitol Project, discussion.
So just a few updates. Um, so we are at a point where we're, you know, just preparing for the referendum. So we've had a few uh, presentations in the community. So um, we had our Salem um, presentation here in the district. And uh, had a, had a nice turnout, we had a little bit of a technical difficulty, so we moved from the team room over into here. Um, but it was, it was a good to, turnout, I think it was close to twenty-five people who attended that. Um, I presented at the Rotary Dinner to the Rotary uh, last Monday, and um, on Thursday at Chushen Firehouse. And we had a, I believe, about fifteen, twelve to fifteen people there. Um, so really, uh, I think some good uh, discussions, um, feedback. I've received some feedback uh, by email uh, to add, so we're developing a Q and A um, with the questions and the responses. Some of the responses uh, were somewhat uh, specific. Uh, for example, one related to the track. And um, so we gave a general answer with a promise of giving some more specifics within that Q and A, so we're developing that, I hope. Um, by Thanksgiving recess, that we'll have that compiled and posted. So we'll post that on the website. Um, and try to get that blasted out in a few different ways uh, for people uh, who may or may not have attended. Uh, also, I've done some personal follow-up with, you know, related to some of those questions to make sure that people um, are receiving a timely answer, but then also putting them in a kind of a community document. Um, there, and so we have one more presentation, which will be on Monday at the Hebron Firehouse at six PM. Um, our newsletter is uh, is basically in the mail, should be going, you know, so it's in progress. So hopefully it'll, yes, it should, should be hitting um, hitting homes by the weekend, if not Monday or Tuesday. We are a little bit at the mercy of, of the post office and the funding of that, but um, our mailings have been pretty timely. So so we're hoping that everyone will have that by Thanksgiving. And then um, Monday or Tuesday of the following week, we'll send out post-heraldic papers uh, regarding the vote for the referendum. So that is in motion. There have been some questions related to, well, could we split um, into multiple propositions uh, so they could vote more like a line item vote? So um, Karen um, explained, and we'll also put in the Q and A that really a lot of the ability and the funding depends on that kind of collective grouping, uh, as well as one project is one referendum. So it's going to vote on three of them and then do all three. Um, so you know, that is, that is a piece of it. There have been some questions about um, more of an itemization of all of the costs, uh, similar to what occurred last time and uh, for the last referendum. And um, I did talk about why that's really not commonplace, but we will, um, we are putting something together to share, but there will be a disclaimer. I think um, you know, people, I I, I understand want to really know that this number encapsulates what we're, you know, what we have on the list. But on the other hand, sometimes that causes confusion because people really focus in on those line items and the costs in that moment, and then, and expect that all of those things may or may not be done. And so there will be a disclaimer attached to that. And that's why we normally would not give all those line items in the beginning. Um, but I do understand, because that was given last time, some people expect that. Um, so I'm working with Karen and the architect. I hope, I hope to have something um, that might speak to that.
In the community.
Yeah, so it'll be attached with the.
Thank you.
Opportunities for the, the board to be heard?
I can just expand briefly on, on what Julie presented about community schools. Um, twenty minutes after leaving Buffalo, the question came to my mind. Um, what really should be the relationship between the superintendent and the board as we move forward with this? Um, and of course, the person I need to ask that question to was twenty minutes behind me. So I sent him an email and and asked Joe, remember his last name?
I'd have to look it up.
Yeah, me too. And and I can forward it to him, you know, if you'd like. Um, asked that question, and he he responded, uh, and really, the lights kind of came on. It made a lot more sense now, see, the superintendent takes care of what goes on in the building. You're the, the, really, you are the, the community relations. Um, you are the ones that that are going to feel from the community, what the community wants that community school to have, what is needed? What is, uh, what are the, the priorities that we want to set? And then we bring that back to the superintendent and say, here's what we're hearing. Um, he suggested surveys, uh, making sure that you get included in your newsletter at some point what a community school is, so people understand what we are. It's not just saying that we're going to leave our doors open twenty-four hours a day. Uh, we're, we're actually providing services here. Um, the new overlay of how community schools work was, I thought, extremely interesting. It, it worked as a, showed a hub and and gear kind of picture as opposed to the four pillars they used to put, they used to, to advertise it as. Um, and before the next meeting, I'll be happy to make copies of that if anyone would like them. Um, as we go further into this, there's going to be more discussion, obviously, with, with what the, the shared decision-making is going to look like. Who's going to be involved in that? Um, it's going to, I know that, having looked at some other, some other avenues, um, I know that Lexit is very much behind us, this initiative as well. Um, so, so it obviously is going to involve uh, the faculty and staff. It's going to involve uh, the, the others in the community coming in here and working with them and working with us. Um, so it, it, the, the opportunities are limitless, and and it really uh, will give us the chance, and I think the ability to provide more and more directed services toward exactly where they're needed, to aim our, our, our resources to where they're most needed, but to make sure that, that base group, that everybody that needs, everyone needs these things, that that's included. But we know that, as Julie said, there's, there's homeless kids. There's kids who are, yeah, who are English without the primary language in their home. They're going to need more services, they're going to need more help, they're going to need more attention. How do we get that to them? How do we provide that? What services do we have to have? And that's what, what I think the, the, the first, having a coordinator come in here and look at that and be able to look at the surveys that we get back saying, well, we need after-school care. We need uh, more, more, more um, medical facilities. We need more um, more meals sent home for the weekend for families that need them. Whatever it comes back, how do we then provide that? Where's the grant money to get to, to do that? Where's, what's the budget line that we can include that in? Um, and these are all the things that, this, this particular workshop really dug into the, the, the nuts and bolts and nitty-gritty of it. Uh, was, was, I thought, one of the best that I've seen on community schools. And I've, I've been to a number of them, so.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I'm, we will have a public comment after, when we finish getting there.
Uh, and I, I just wanted to confirm, so um, we had a lot of conversation during my report. So um, is there any concern or objection that the board supports me looking?
Yes. Pursuing, you know, currently with the grant.
So really, obviously, would not need to approve the expenditure, but needs to approve the position.
Okay.
Thank you.
And just for the board, um, Gina spoke to me about um, our holiday. Usually in the past, um, we've had breakfast where there was a hiatus for COVID. We tried it again, we didn't get, I think the people's schedules have changed and expectations have changed, and maybe the old, the old normal needs to morph into the new normal. So Heidi's helping me to get some ideas together about how we might uh, acknowledge the staff and retirees over the Christmas holidays. So you'll be seeing some things from us as far as maybe some options uh, to, to that. So just to let people know that we're, we're talking about it. And Gina did um, attend a virtual policy workshop today, and there are going to be some changes to uh, their, the policy group that we have been working. group that we have been working with. So this may actually be a time for us to take a look at that new change that they have. Plus Nuba, uh, Nisba had their, their own policy, um, service as well. So this may be the time to really take a deep look at where we're getting our policies and what service we want and, and, you know, we want to do that.
So question related to that, would it be then, um, put in to, um, have our policy committee maybe convene, um, and, and, um, take a look at what each could offer and, and then we'll come back and have a recommendation about them.
Because that is for the budget. I think Gina says that it will take effect in the next school year. So.
And I, and I think what we could do is really look at, um, what each of them costs and probably come up with a number to budget. So we don't, we don't necessarily rush into our decision, but we would definitely want to look at the cost of, if we did change, is it comparable? If not, we would want to look at the impact to the budget.
And it does sound like, uh, everyone will have a significant increase
Okay.
in the cost of the policy services.
I planned on being on that with her, but I, my other leading grandma and
and I had it up on my computer and I'm just, I got called away. So I wasn't able to watch it yet. So.
So, uh, well, well Gina and I will, um, we plan on having up, she was going to update me, uh, either tomorrow or Friday, and then, um, we'll send a note out to our.
I think they were going to send the recording to
Oh, okay.
whoever was registered.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah.
Okay. And then we can, um, convene the, the supplement.
Okay. And then, uh, we do have a list of dates to remember. It looks like there's some holiday things coming up and the play is on there and we have our capital project vote. So, so all those dates are listed. Changes to those dates are not that I know. At this time, I'd like to open up the floor back up for public comment. If somebody has something that I would like to say, if you would come into the podium.
Cut line. Um, we had the opportunity to take a group of 46 students today to watch Midsummer Night's Dream. I highly recommend everybody get a ticket and go. It was awesome. David and I were two of the lucky ones that got to go. Anna Courtney is in it and does an amazing job.
And we have some students.
We have a couple, I was going to say littles, but they're not so little anymore. Um, there's at least
My daughter's in.
Four. Three or four of our Salem students in it.
We have graduates.
We have graduate, yes. Um, there's a couple Cambridge people in it and a couple Greenwich people in it. So.
It's exciting.
It was, it was awesome. And I was thankful that we got to go see it. So.
Awesome. Thank you for sharing.
They skipped school today.
Good evening. Phil Keith, I've attended before. I'm an occasional, uh, board meeting attendee. Uh, and I have attended, Julie did a fair presentation on this, uh, new building project. Um, and I did say fair. I learned a few things. I believe that you said during the Chushen meeting that the last, uh, okay. The building survey condition was done in 2015. And we're due for a new building survey condition next year or this fall or before the end of the year.
It's coming up.
It's coming up. Okay. Uh, I, I noticed in the, uh, information that was passed out for this new building project, yeah, that building condition survey was indicated in there of items that were in need of action. And I know that this new building project primarily is to have the archway enclosed, which I talked to one person other than board members, uh, who are for closing the archway. You have a good point. You're going to go for, uh, it's going to go to a vote. And it can't be line item. It, it could be, but there would have to, there would be some things that would have to be worked out. So it's going to be all for one or, or all for none. The people that I talked to, I've shown them, they all glassed in. Very good. By the gym going in there. And they look at that and they say that, nah. That doesn't look like Salem. That, that, you know, I mean, you, at least you're trying to deal with the conceptual thing with, uh, the architects that you've hired. And the board has an awesome responsibility. I think the first responsibility that you have is to the student of this. And I'm glad that you were talking about taking care, I mean, I'm sure that there's some homeless and there's some kids and families can't pay their taxes, probably don't have a computer to get on the website and see all the stuff that the school is offering. You have responsibility to the taxpayers. And you have also a responsibility to the, uh, who I think is doing a great job. The, all the people that maintain this building. The, the janitors, custodians, the food service people, everybody, bus drivers. I mean, they get, they transport the kids from home to here. So anyways, um, I'm, I'm not going to speak more than two or three hours. Oh, by the way, I did not hit the, uh, our ball. So I guess you're stuck with the mosaic. I'd just like to.
That would have been generous of you.
Well, I, I, I would, I, I'm not saying I would have, uh, enclosed the arc. There's some conflict there. Julie, at the Chushen meeting, I've been to two of my plan to go to the third one. Do you have a concept on how you want to enclose the arc? That's fine. Problem arises is the board's asking for $14.7 million, which is the maximum that we can borrow, according to Karen McGregor. And we're going to fit all this stuff that's in proposition in there. And it can be done. Julie said it could be done. I don't know if I believe her, but that's where it is. The issue is how to enclose the arcs. That's the easy part. We don't know what we're doing with the buses, the bus routes. We might be able to go this way. We might be able to go that way. We spent a lot of money, oh, $14 million, $15, $15 million on the last building project. And some of this stuff that's in there, like the 500 seat grandstand, was in the last proposition. It never got done. There are items in the last building project. Karen told me in a meeting that the architects had completed all the work that they were going to do. And if they had, they probably would have spent the $20 million. So I just have a problem with you guys. You, uh, you're, you're tacking on a roof. The roof is a no brainer. We know that needs to be done. Greenhouse, me, is a no brainer. Julie said, we are compliant in ADA, but we can do better and we certainly can do better. And one of the things that was brought up, it doesn't matter how much money the community gives you guys. Somebody wants to do some harm to this school district. Closing the arch is not going to stop them. So I think you all realize that. Um, like I said, I, uh, we're going to go out for a vote. You're not going to do anything for next year. If we're concerned about safety, at the Chushen meeting, I told Julie, if you're concerned about student safety, walk in between the high school and elementary school, move all the elementary school students into the main building. You've got three or four doors that you think can be secured. You don't have to worry about kids getting run over in the aisle like, because there won't be anybody traveling through there. The buses will still go there. We have many, many, many administration. They all have their own room, you know? And you admitted that, uh, Mr. Glover pulls the students from over there, moved them over here.
We didn't.
You did.
Because of the project, that they were abating asbestos in the elementary building.
Correct.
And nobody could be in there. So the plan was made well in advance of COVID, but it was really hard for us to do that.
Right.
But it wasn't because it was the best thing to do as far as the utilization of our space. It wants to provide uninterrupted time for the work to go on in that building.
That, that is correct. And I'll agree with you there. But it has been done. I mean, I believe that the high school has enough space to accommodate the students that are over there. We don't have to wait a year or two years before this work is done. And not knowing how we're going to, how we're going to bring the buses in, that's the people that I talked to have asked me how are the buses going to, and I show them the conceptual, I know it's almost conceptual drawing. Everything is conceptual and, and we paid $50,000 or $60,000 for the conceptual drawing that is on the new building proposition. I've asked two or three times. I think three. I'd just like to know what the architect get paid without the 50 or 60 grand for the conceptual drawing? What did they get paid for the 2018 project? Karen McGregor said that they get between four and six percent on project. Apparently the board authorized them to get six percent. I don't know if any of you guys argued with them and said, hey, can we do it for four? AI is coming out. I, I heard a lot about AI tonight. And if, uh, in 18 months, a lot of these jobs are going to be gone because of AI, just ask chat, GPT or, or whatever to do your next budget. Guys don't have to do anything. They'll put everything together for you and life will be good. So I thank you for, uh, being on the board. Uh, do you guys do it for free? They come down here for free. If all indications that I have, the budget for this new building project is going to go down. If I'm wrong, that's fine. If it goes down, with the board people in you've got the figures for the roof, we got figures for the greenhouse, we've got figures for ADA compliance. Take closing the arc pathway out of here and present one that can get started next year. And make the school great again. Thank you for your time.
Any other, uh, comment? All right. At, at this point, I'd like to entertain a motion to move to executive session with the purpose to meet with counsel to seek legal advice and guidance. We would also like to be discussing collective negotiations, um, with our teachers association.
There's a motion, a second.
Motion.
A second.
Someone. Second by Peter. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. You do not anticipate any action after deck your statue?
No, we do not.
So we will. Our teamer, uh, returned. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Thank you.